The meeting to order.
On the cloud, isn't it?
Ian, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. A little nicer evening than last Wednesday. Before you, you have an agenda. I have no changes to the agenda. I don't know if anybody has anything. Could I get a? But moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Recognizations? Are there any recognitions tonight? Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to recognize the boards for the little snack and the treat and the card from last week. I didn't get a chance to do that, but I think it was good timing and your choice of chocolate was good.
Thank you. Sean?
I would. I'd like to recognize Kyle Miller for being the first Newcastle girl for being a state champion in wrestling.
Are there any other recognitions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a few. Didn't see you guys at the Valentine's dance back in February. But I would recognize Leslie Morris for all her time and effort and all the chaperones that did attend the well-attended middle school dance. I sent you guys a late email this afternoon. I think you're already in training this afternoon, but I sent you a slideshow that Sally Hoover has put together. The BH Teacher Fair is tomorrow. We're going to send a group there to see if we can recruit some applicants. And we had a brilliant idea all of like two days ago to put together a slideshow to help us with that endeavor. Sally put together something really nice, which I think you guys will enjoy. And then, I mean, it's something that sells our district. So I think it's worth your time when you do have time to give that a look, but recognize Sally for her efforts. And then I would recognize Kylie Shoemaker, who happens to be back here for doing another year of Random Acts of Kindness in the middle school. She always coordinates with the kind of the national week, but we do some cool things in the middle school, and that's largely spearheaded by her. So those are my recognitions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Randy?
Hi, thanks. I just have a couple. First of all, speaking of Valentine's Day, I'd like to recognize Don Williams, Gigi Fullerton, and Pam Carr for all their work with the balloons. If you've never been down there on Valentine's Day, balloons take over, so. And then also recognize our paras in the building. Right after Christmas, we had some big changes in staffing and student needs. And so we did a big revamp of all their schedules. And then just for fun, we added some new programming into Walk to Learn, too. So our paras really stepped up, and I appreciate them being flexible and for their hard work. And then our good citizens for the month were Kendall Watt, Sidney Baker, and Dustin Porter. So big shout out to them.
Thank you, Randy. Any other recognitions? We'll move on to visitors' comments and we'll, I guess. Back to the chief of police first thing.
Is that good? Okay, can I get a little closer?
Probably if you're getting some.
That's my daughter's thing. It's not my thing. It went right past me. Thanks for having me show up here and talk to you guys. If you guys have any questions for me, you know, ask away. School safety is a big part here. We've already dealt with some, some things. And I'm sure we'll have some stuff in the future that we have to deal with, but I would like to be proactive on my part about providing public safety and directing that to school. So I hope that when I come up with ideas that you guys will listen to those and maybe implement some of those. Some of those things cost money. But, you know, I think the safety of our children and teachers, I mean, we can't put a price tag on those. So I think there's a few things that we need to do to step up and be proactive about protecting our kids. So in the future, I'm going to work with the superintendent and the principals to maybe try to get some of those things implemented. It's a, it's a priority for me and along with a bunch of other issues that we have going on here, but that is a big priority of mine. So just having questions that I can answer for the board. Sean has to have something, right? Come on. Well, I appreciate you guys having me here, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess we have.
All right, this was in the board packet, but there's a printed copy for you so that you can take a look at it. All right, I'm going to start on the side that has Weston County School District with the logo on it. That helps. All right, so last year, well, really, if you go all the way back, I kind of included some history of this bill. In 2001, the state of Wyoming started a K three literacy bill, which is not uncommon. A lot of states have been revamping these in the last couple of years. What we know is that students need to have what they, what they need in place by third grade, because that's when it's easier to close that gap for them. So that's why it's K three. So that's pretty common to see K two or K three on these literacy bills when they come through. So this isn't a new bill, but last year it went under some pretty major amendments that were made. And they're worth talking about there. A lot of these, the rules went out to a probation committee, so it's taken some time, as all things do, once they go through there. So now's kind of the time that I can come and talk to you about what this means for our K three and what we're already doing. I think we're in a, you'll hear we're in a really good place with this. A lot of districts are having to scramble a little bit and put some things in place. Weston County One's been doing a lot of these things for a lot of years, so kind of exciting to see. So I just listed out some of those requirements under the bill, and we'll see, we're still waiting on those final things out of the AG's office to tell us exactly what all of this will look like in terms of like the number of PD hours that are required under the bill and some of that. So we're still waiting for a little bit of more information from them, but they are sure it will be done soon. So whatever soon is. And the first one is that this bill requires the use of a screener, and it's identified by the Wyoming Department of Education, but really what that means when you dig into it is there are certain guidelines that this screener has to meet. So whatever screener we had, we could take and say, yes, it checks all these boxes. And then the state would come back and say, okay, use that one. Thankfully, the one we've had in place since a long time was Dibbles, right? Gabby knows this. It was, it used to be Dibbles, as some of you know, it went under a name change. It's Acadians now. We've been doing it. We, we've already got that system in place. It's not going to affect us. We're going to continue doing what we're doing there. So if you hear us talk about Acadians, and I think all of us use Dibbles a lot, because we, the assessment did not change one bit. It was really just the name that changed. So that's already in place for us. The second piece of that, that the state legislature put through is that parent notification and screening, and it says as soon as possible. So their goal there is just to help open those lines of communication between families and the school, which is great. So we did roll out a process this year for completing these individual reading plans for, for students who have a sign, something in that data at the beginning of the year that was telling teachers that this might be a student who struggles a little bit with reading. Those students were put on an individual plan, teachers talked to parents, and we made a plan for what we were going to do to change that child's experience with reading. So those are checked in on about every six weeks, six to eight weeks generally. And then if what we're doing is working, we continue on with that business. If we can pull back a little bit on some of the interventions, we do that. And if we need to do something more, then that decision is, is had right then. It's to keep us from letting a student slip through the cracks, you could say. So that's, I think, worked really well. The feedback from teams is that it's giving them, it's putting those students at the forefront and allowing them to have those conversations. So we've had good feedback, and the results from it look really promising from that process. The next piece was the reporting requirements. So this generally falls on me to report that. The state is not looking just at Y top, which doesn't start until third grade. They are now requiring us to look at the pillars that we know exist within reading instructions. So they list those as phonology, phonics, decoding, fluency, and comprehension, and pull that data apart and submit it to the Wyoming Department of Education that way. I'm really interested to see some of that, that comparison piece. I want to know how we're doing compared to other districts on that K two side, and we can't do that with Y top until third grade. So that'll be kind of interesting as districts are getting that information. There's some that are working to get into compliance on that. Ours was submitted this year. Everything, we have all that data, because that's what we've done already. There's also some rules coming out to include that screener criteria, but also part of this bill includes professional development, both the content of that professional development around reading and who is getting that. And the bill states anybody who is teaching students and has anything to do with reading. So that the way that it looks like those rules are going to come out, there will be requirements for our paraprofessionals. There will be requirements for our specials teachers where that might be a little less time, same type of content, but less time. Our title reading teachers are going to have more of a larger amount of time that they will need to spend in professional development, which is, you know, what they do, so that, that makes sense. I will have a little bit more time required for me, and administration is under there. It just kind of looks like it's going to list out the layers. We don't have those numbers yet, but we have rolled out letters professional development for quite a few years. I think 2011 was the first year we did that. That professional development meets, checks every box that they're going to come up with. They haven't finalized all of that, but last summer, they put a call out for a few stakeholders within the schools to help make those rules. And we were really lucky that I was selected to be on that, so I've gotten to be a part of some of that. So we kind of know what's coming. I spent a lot of time with, there were 14 of us from around the state, and we spent a lot of time in meetings looking at what other states are doing. And so I feel really good about what we've got going on. We also were able to purchase some professional developments, some book study type materials that we can utilize with that Y Bill grant. So I think we're sitting in pretty good shape for whatever that looks like. It'll probably be the letters training that we've already done, and then specific things where I will probably have to submit a syllabus to the state, have it approved, and then we'll go on. It won't be, won't be a huge deal. And we'll have those numbers soon for, for what that looks like. They are going to stretch those over three years. So it's not going to be like teachers are going to get 100 hours of professional development next year. They're, they seem like they're kind of keeping that in check, understanding that it's not just reading professional development, and teachers have a lot of other things that they're doing. So I was a little nervous about that when the bill came out, but looking at what the state has come back with, with some of the recommendations from that committee, I, I don't think it's going to be overwhelming. So that was, that was good to see, because we don't need more put on our plates. I think a lot of what we're doing will, will already fill those requirements. And that kind of lasts, that kind of finishes out the last piece. So on the other side of your handout, there is three bar graphs. The bottom one is coming right back from COVID, where our numbers were on Acadians. Those are the number of students benchmark or above, all the way up to where we're at this year, middle of the year. Those middle of the year scores tell us where we're at and which students we need to be changing some things for to make sure they're getting what they need as far as reading is concerned. So you can all take a look at that and see, it's pretty exciting to see some of that growth coming back that teachers were a little discouraged about coming back from COVID. So it's nice to see good things happening. So any questions for me about either of these?
Erin, can you remind, how much was our Y Bill grant?
No, you have to turn back on.
There we go. Could you remind, how much was our Y Belt grant?
I don't know off the top of my head, so I'm going to look at Sonia. I think it was around $300,000.
Yeah, I would say I don't have the exact amount off the top of my head, but it's like around $320,000 that we got for a three-year period.
Isn't that split between some preschool, some early learning preventative things, elementary?
No, I don't mind.
That is not the button I was pushing. Nope, that's why it wasn't turning on. That's split between that preschool area, elementary, middle school, and we're looking at some things with high school to bring in. And has, has provided a lot of opportunities and materials that we needed. So it's been really great. And Sonia and I've had the opportunity to go meet with other people that have received that grant, and I think we leave feeling pretty good about what's going on. We like coming back to the district and feel pretty good about what we're doing. Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you guys ever have any questions about it, just call her and I can, happy to talk to you about it.
Appreciate it. Well, we'll, we'll just move on and if she, if she does sign in, let us know, and we'll do that at that point.
And like you said, it might be her, whoever that is, it's just not connected.
Okay. If that's okay with the board, either we gotta take a nap. No. Let's move on to the action items. Consent agenda? Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Under new business, Brad, certified resignation?
Yes, I would recommend to the board the resignation of Dave Christensen as the elementary PE teacher and permission to post.
Move to approve? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resignation of Dave Christensen as the elementary PE teacher. And, and post the position. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Classified recommendation. Brad?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend to you Eva Francis as a kitchen assistant.
Is there?
Move to approve?
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to prove Eva Francis as a kitchen assistant that we're at elementary, high school? Okay.
Primarily, but they do switch periodically when things get a little.
Okay. So any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Move down to reports. Gabby, you want to go first tonight? Okay. She needs a microphone.
Um, I have a very short one tonight, but I would just like to let everybody know that our elections are in full swing for our executive council. We have about three members running for executive council right now against each other. We're starting these earlier this year to allow for about a two-month period to train them before we leave for the year. And then also, we will be hosting the blood drive on April 5th. And that is it.
Any questions for Gabby? Thank you. Angie, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to report that we started the TMS, the Time Management System Implementation today after a couple delays and conflicts in schedules. So we started that today. I'm looking forward to that getting in, in place. So now keep everybody up to date on what's going on, where we're at. And then the state audit was, the auditors were here the week of the 13th through the 17th, and they finished, and it sounded like everything went pretty well. Now we'll just wait for them to get back to us with their assessment, and then we'll address issues that maybe we can provide them some documentation for that we didn't when they were here. So that went pretty good and trying to learn and figure out the budget process. So what's going on?
Any questions for Angie? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sonia?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll just kind of keep this one short tonight, because I'll defer most of it to next week when it's our meeting. But we did, thanks, Mr. LaCroix. We just got the notification as far as the school district that our school improvement plans, so if you recall, the elementary school and the high school had to submit a school improvement plan based off of variety of things, Y top being one of the main mechanisms there. And so the feedback was pretty positive as far as what was in the plans and just documentation and clarity of that. So we're in good shape that way moving forward. So, so that was good news. They do get back to you. So anyway, that's all I had for tonight unless you have questions.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Sonia. You want to go, Teresa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Got through winter. It was very, very busy, but everything's kind of winding down for winter this week.
So you're saying winter's over?
Well, not the weather, but the facility usage. And it's still really busy. We got AAU volleyball starting next week and, but it's not quite as busy. So that's, I'm grateful for that. The ramp came in and they're fixing it, or they're putting it together. It's pretty intensive. That's what Keith told me. But it's over at the pool, and I'm hoping it'll be done here quickly. I have been in contact with one of the gentlemen that is really anxious to use it. So I've been trying to communicate with him and just trying to maybe get some spring swim lessons done. I've been getting a lot of requests for that. So that's kind of my next little thing going on. And elementary swim lessons, and there's nothing else really going on. Any questions for me?
Sean, have we looked into opening up the weight room for Saturday and Sundays?
We haven't. I would probably have to put a budget together, because that would hit if, if it's in the budget or not. We, we have had it tried to be open, and the numbers just haven't been there to justify paying somebody.
Would there be a possibility if we could find volunteers for that? I just, just throwing it out there.
Go ahead, Gabby. Oh. We have had that discussion. The problem that has happened is volunteers haven't been reliable. So when you say the gym's going to be open or the weight room's going to be open and somebody doesn't show up, that gets frustrating.
Gabby, did you have a question?
Yeah. What are your requirements for them to like run the weight room or the gym or anything?
They have to be 18, basically. They don't go through any formal training. They, I mean, they go through training with other employees, but they don't have to be CPR or anything sort of. They just, they have to be 18 years old. And then go through, if they're 18 and students, I don't have to do a background check and all that, but if they're over 18, I have to do the whole as being an employee for the school district.
Any other questions? Thank you. Randy?
I'm going to see you next week, so I don't have anything unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? Thank you, Randy. Tyler? That's a bad.
We're good, we're good. Not Bo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple things. I already did kind of mention the BH Teacher Fair. That's tomorrow. That's district. You know, we're going to send some reps that way. There's another one at Shatterance State at the end of the month. So we'll keep trying to find interested applicants for some of the openings that we already have, and you never know what's going to happen down the road. Things that I would run by you real quick, parent teacher conferences for the district, just so you guys are aware, March 21st and 23rd. Make sure those are on the calendars if they aren't already. And then it is that time of year, now that it's March. We're working on some plans for Y top testing and those kind of things with the summative test. So usually every year I come back and just run something by you guys, but working on a plan for some sort of incentive for those students to demonstrate above-average growth. Every year I have probably one or two people, parents or otherwise, that kind of express some frustration with that incentive, and I even can totally understand where they're coming from. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are still on board with doing something that rewards those kids for growth. You know, this is where we took them to Evans plunge and Watiki and the movie theater and whatever. So just, there's been some turnover, so I wanted to make sure everybody knows that that's something we've done in the past, and then just wanted to make sure everybody's good with it going forward.
I think we are.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Karen, did you have anything?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any question?
Thanks.
Any questions for Karen? Thank you, Karen. Is there any? Oh, okay. Kim?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm reporting in from Torrington, Wyoming, and I apologize. I can't be with you this evening. And I just, I felt I needed to get on because I did submit a report. Do all of you have a copy of that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so for those of you that are new, I'll, I'll try and go in or over details with you over the fall and spring semesters with our concurrent enrollment. And so I try and point out percentages of students who enroll. And so in the fall semester, we had 7% registered for freshmen, 44% sophomores registered, 48% juniors, and 64% of seniors. And we had 90 total students enroll in the fall for concurrent credit, and a total of 18 classes were offered. And then this spring, we had 22% of our freshmen registered, 28% of our sophomores, 48% of the juniors, and 50% of the seniors. And then 12 classes were offered this spring for concurrent credit, and a total of 83 students were enrolled. And then you can see on all of the classes that we offer and the breakdown in number of students that take each of those classes. And then for dual credit, in the fall semester, we had 15 seniors who registered and then four juniors who registered for dual credit. And for those of you that are new, the difference between concurrent and dual enrollment And for those of you that are new, the difference between concurrent and dual enrollment, um, concurrent classes. They are offered during the high school day with our high school teachers who have been pre-approved to teach the college classes. And then the dual credit classes are college classes that students take online through our Eastern Wyoming college teachers. And in the fall, we had a total of nineteen students that that took the dual credit. And a very various classes they took online, principles, biology, general biology. Public speaking, history, medical terminology, um, interpersonal communications. And then in the spring semester, this this spring, we had a total of thirteen seniors who registered for dual credit. And, um, eleven juniors who registered for dual credit this spring, so a total of twenty-four students. Who are taking online classes and we have a variety of classes that were, they're taking online. We have a student taking intro to animal science, intro to business, principles of biology. Public speaking, interpersonal communications, history, world history. Health and fitness, um, uh, psychology and the reason why you'll see the psychology on both of those two. We do offer it for concurrent credit, but if students have a conflict in their schedule. And can't take it for concurrent credit, they enroll in it online. And then we have them taking American and Wyoming government, social sociology, principles, ethics and practice and fundamentals of statistics. And the fundamentals of statistics that, that is the group of students, um, who initially were taking it. Or enrolled to take it for concurrent cr- credit, but due to our situation, we arranged for them to take that online this spring. And so, um, we have them enrolled for that for dual credit this spring. And then for the site classes, um, we partner with the Wyoming Honor Conservation Camp. Um, I am their point of contact for scheduling of classes and then I do all of the registration of the inmates. They offer welding courses and welding certifications up at the honor camp. And this past fall, they offered three welding classes and, um, and they had a pretty good enrollment in all three of those classes. And then this spring so far, they've offered two, two classes and then we'll continue to have more, um, to come this spring. And then this past spring, we did also service, um, Mondale Heights, they had a, a need for a CNA class. So we offered a CNA class to four students this past spring, um, and they actually just, um, finished taking their test in Torrington and became certified CNAs. And then the last thing we do, um, that I report out with, um, our program, we offer community education in our community. And this past fall, um, we offered sixteen different classes. And we had a hundred and twenty-five participants total, um, in all of the sixteen classes that we offered. And then this spring, we, we don't have all of our numbers yet because we're still, um, still have several that will be offered later this spring, um, but we have twenty-three total that we're offering, um, what we have found, um, to be very, very popular this spring. We, we are offering several gardening classes, we found a lady out of, out of Custer and, um, she has a wealth of knowledge in gardening and and we've had great turnouts with our gardening classes. And then we have also partnered with the extension office and Caleb Carter has offered, or he's offering several classes on trees in Wyoming and taking care of trees and we've had, as you can see with our fruit trees, we had seventeen attend. Um, and so we're getting great numbers in response from our community with those classes, something new that we've never tried before. And we're in full swing with driver's ed, we have, have about a month to go with that. And then we will be sending our drivers out on the roads in April, so be, be aware, you'll be seeing a driver's ed card driving around our community. Um, that is all I have to report, um, I also did provide CLO with a copy of our newspaper brochure from the spring, so I hope you received a copy of that. Um, and if you're interested in any of those classes, please reach out to us, we'd love to have you as a participant. Um, if you have any questions, please let me know.
I have, I have one question for you, Kim. Uh, do we have anybody in line for associate's degree?
Oh, yes, you know, that was on the front of my page and I apologize. Um, and one of them is sitting right there with you this evening. Gabby McVeigh is one of my associate track students who will be receiving her degree and, and, um, my plan is I will be, I have four, um, in line to receive their associates this spring. And my plan is to have them come and attend your meeting in April, so I can recognize them and have you meet all four of them.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kim? Well, have fun in Torrington, Kim.
Well, thank you, go doggies.
Yeah. Bo, did you have anything?
Uh, just, just, just a, just a little bit, so, um, we did add a couple doors, um, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, we're adding, uh, gym doors and pools, so you can get in with your, um, your keys, so. Those are a couple of doors we thought were important that that weren't on the original project. And then I have, uh, two bids that will go into the packet for next meeting, if you want to look at it, one will be for the high school refresh. And the other will be for the control server, so if you want to look at that, or if you have any questions, you can give me a call or.
Okay.
That's about it, so.
Thank you, Bo. Is there anybody else on Zoom? Don't see anybody, okay. Brad, we're up to you.
Mr. Chair, I thank you, just a couple of quick bills for you to, uh, I think, uh, pay attention to as we get going down the stretch here. Uh, one is the transgender athlete in sports, I think that was, is going to, uh, draw quite a bit of attention. And then the other one that I would ask that you pay a lot of attention to is the House Bill one seventy-four, which is the charter schools. And the reason I say that is, um, if, if certain things do not align between public schools and charter schools, i.e. accountability. Um, state testing, um, certified staff, those kinds of things, um, it, it may behoove us as a district to look at what the possibilities of a charter school could be for us. So those are just two bills, um, some items for you to watch down the road. There's eight items, um, that are going to be interim topics, uh, pre-K, pre-K, um, funding. And I believe also the, a learning, um, piece that Erin referred to, um, just a little while ago, school lunch. Uh, again, charter schools, uh, an alternative diploma, I'm not exactly sure what that means, but, um, my understanding is local boards may have the discretion to look at, you know, what would be uh, a regular ed diploma versus a vocational, uh, CTE diploma kind of a deal, um. Let's see, oh, the redu- reduction of standards, which, uh, the state board has already sort of taken under, um, mental health will be another big one, the both the profile of the graduate and the governor's ride. And then also the conversation with the schools facilities, um, commission, um, are all big ones for you to be watching as we, we get going down the road. So it's getting close to the end of the session, um, and I will send out another update. Um, after this meeting to you on today's happenings, but just sort of some things that you may want to pay attention to.
Any questions for Brad? Thank you, Brad. Allison's not up there yet? Okay. Uh, future agenda items. Uh, I guess this should have been under action items, but we need an early start for the March eighth for the executive session to discuss administrators' evaluations. When, we usually start at five, is that? Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Is there a second? Been moved and seconded to have an early start, March eighth, uh, at five o'clock for administration. Administrators' evaluations and contracts. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying I. I opposed. Motion carried. Does any board member have anything else for future agenda items? Would you, I, I guess, would you want to look through the materials that Rod gave us and see if we want to do a?
I think those went out just a little while, like, I think they more should have received a copy.
Okay, and look at them and next. And if we want to discuss, just bring it to the next board meeting, and if we wanted to have a little workshop prior to a meeting or something, maybe an hour before, whatever, we can do that. We'll get Allison for next meeting. We try to get her for next meeting, I don't know what happened to her.
I did have a board report.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry. Throw something at me.
And it's only good news, yeah?
Um, the Wyoming Educators Benefit Trust Board met, um, and went over, uh, all the balance sheets and investments and made a determination on rate increases. Because of the structure of that, I cannot tell you what the rate increase will be for this district. Uh, they don't, they make sure to not let individual board members know what that is. Um, but they will be coming to you soon to tell you. Um, we, because of, uh, uh, how the stock market was this year and the number of claims, we're still in this sort of, I, I still think it's a bounce back from all the stuff people didn't do during COVID. And so we're still up higher claims than we expected to be, so, um, that's pretty much where that is. But they should be here soon to tell you that, have they made an appointment yet? Wh- when are they coming? Oh, okay. Okay.
If it was really good information, I'd share it with you. I haven't had the time to sit down at Angie's spot.
I, I can tell you this, that the usage, um, so the, the loss ratio on the thousand dollar deductible plans and there are probably actually eight or ten different kind of deductible plans that WebT offers its members. Uh, the usage rate is at a hundred and twenty percent. So they're taking a hundred and twenty percent of what they pay in. So the people who are choosing the thousand dollar deductible category now will be paying an additional premium to be able to offer that, so what I look for is for that to eventually disappear, that. And, and so fifteen hundred at some point will probably be the lowest deductible.
Sorry about that. Good.
I know.
Did you have a report on the Brad? Oh, I thought you had.
As the web trust had the conversation similar to what other institutions are doing, that if you or your spouse has, um, benefit packages at their employment, that they, they have to choose that and and not be on what, what they, I guess they call it an open market?
Yeah, that is left out to each, uh,
each participating group. So you can decide what, we can decide what we want to do here at this, at the district. The city of Newcastle can decide how they want and the county commissioners can decide what they want. So that is left completely up to you, we just have the, the single or family and retiree, um, options.
Are there any other future agenda items? Well, yeah. We have no discussion items tonight, so. Look at the time, folks. Meeting's adjourned.
I'd like to call the rec board meeting to order. We have an agenda, do I have any corrections? It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying I. Opposed? Motion carries, any recognitions? Seeing none? Visitors comments? No visitors comments, action items? It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent to Jenna, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying I. Opposed? Motion carried. Looks, looks like there is no old business. Sorry, it went away. There is no old business and there is no new business? And under construction. So is it in the minutes? Okay, so any, any discussion items? Seeing none, I'll adjourn the meeting.